Good afternoon, and today is the 30th of January 2025. Welcome to the AIB meeting for the Blueprint for Maryland. I am delighted that all of you are here joining us today. Let me make just a couple of opening comments. I want to thank our Executive Director, who participated with me yesterday here in Annapolis. And the week before, she participated with our Vice Chair. This is the time of year that we spend a great deal of time in Annapolis and an awful lot of moving parts and moving all at once. So I want to thank her and the entire staff, all the hard work in preparing the information, the slides, the graph, and positioning us in a way that we can more effectively testify and provide input for our legislators in Annapolis. This is an awful lot of work for relatively small staff, but I think that we're getting it all done. The first thing we need to do is to approve two sets of minute summaries. One for our joint meeting with the Maryland Board of Education on the Tuesday, I think it was, and also for our last meeting. We got the actual date at this point, I think it was January the 10th. Was that correct?
Correct.
Correct. And so I would like to have a motion. I'm going to move a motion that we approved the summary of both. Do we have to do those separately? I'm not sure. I'm going to move them both.
They'll be done together.
Okay, thank you. All right. The move that we approved the minutes summaries for January the 10th and for February the 28th.
January.
Moving in properly second, are you in a discussion on the motion? Any unreadiness? Saying none, ready for the question? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Here are none. The meetings for those two days are approved. Let me continue on the comments I was making a moment ago. This is the time of the year that we have a great deal of moving parts in Annapolis, a great deal of concern with the budget, the challenges that we face as a state, and a great deal of attention focused now on the Blueprint for Maryland. I want to reemphasize something that I've stated a number of times. A, that the blueprint is a 10-year document, covers actions that cover at least 10 years. We do not anticipate that there will not be changes that be made over the period of time. We have made one substantive change thus far this year that deals with the challenges that we face, with the inability to have all of the teachers available to fully implement, even on a stage process, the collaborative time, given the deficit of teachers that we face, the challenges with retention, the challenges with those who are conditionally certified, as well as the vacancies of now approximately 1,600 teachers. Now, repeat this point again. We are aggressively with the Governor's Office and others and with the State Board of Education, working diligently to come up with ideas and suggestions that continue the work that has already been started to enhance the number of teachers, both in terms of action numbers and quality for the state of Maryland. But there's no magical approach to this. There's no one solution that would allow us to get out of this overnight. And this is why we made the suggestion that we pause the approach that we've taken, that's outlined in the blueprint for the collaborative time. It does not mean that we will not restart that at some point. We will look at other ways in which to reduce the heavy reliance upon the number of teachers that were stated in the original plan and try to come up with innovative ways to ensure that we have collaborative time. I'm going to ask Ms. Heiss just to go through for the public and for others who may be interested in this, what we mean as a collaborative time and how that is impacted by our teacher shortage, what it is that calls for in the blueprint and what it is that we are moving forth in terms of, and what we currently have and what the blueprint calls for. Because I think there's still a great deal of confusion out there. So I'm going to allow, in terms of my open statement, to get that out on the record so that we're clear about that. Ms. Heiss, if you don't mind?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And we can certainly also, of course, at the Tuesday board meeting with the State Board, we did have some specific slides defining collaborative time. And we'll make sure those are easy for everyone to find as well. But essentially, the term collaborative time really refers to additional time that the blueprint calls for teachers to have during their each day to work in professional learning communities, to work with their colleagues, looking at student data, both within grade level and subject matter or across grade level and subject matter in order to really, you know, meet the needs of students is really the goal of it. And as part of that time, it's called collaborative time, but it also includes time for teachers to actually work with students one-on-one and in small group settings to deliver the interventions that students need in order to be successful and achieve their outcomes, positive outcomes. And so the blueprint calls for teachers having this time in addition to their individual planning time, which is what typically teachers have about 20% of their time where they are primarily work, have individual planning time where they are typically working by themselves in their classroom on lesson plans and grading papers and things like that. And this collaborative time is really meant to be more meeting with peers and working as other, you know, as professions do. And this is part of the blueprint's goals to make teaching a much more attractive profession for our students and adult career changers so that, so that they're, you know, this is part of the growing the teacher pipeline too, to make sure that we have folks who want to be teachers and have this additional time, which also research shows leads to better student outcomes. And as Dr. Kerwin pointed out on Tuesday, this all came from looking at top performing systems around the world and how they organize their day and how teachers spend their time to get the kind of outcomes that the top performing systems get. And that was where the, what is called the 40% collaborative time is, it comes from these top performing systems.
You have anything you add, Dr. Kerwin? Because your name was mentioned.
No, I think Executive Director Heiss did an excellent job. Obviously, you can't have effective collaborative time unless you have the number of teachers necessary to make, to give teachers time outside the classroom to participate in this. And that's really our challenge with the, at the moment, because we don't have the flow of teachers that we need in order to have really effective collaborative, make a collaborative time possible.
Thank you. One of the things that the motion that we approved at the joint meeting on Tuesday, it included our concern that we address some of the potential ancillary impacts of moving forward with this approach. That is, that we will continue to seek and provide, if we can, additional resources to address some of the other concerns that are impacted by that. That is part of what we included in that motion. That is not simply to zero out all of the resources dedicated for collaborative time. A, we examine pilots, come up with additional approaches, but also try to address as best we can some of the ancillary impacts that may be hampered by the delay in moving to a collaborative time funding at the rate and at the pace that was originally anticipated in the blueprint. Okay, unless there are further questions about that or comments, then we're going to move on. First of all, we have some public comments, I think, that are available. I'm not sure if all of the people are here in our waiting room. If so, I know we have some in writing, but there are those here in person to offer testimony. Staff?
We do have Ms. Ria Gupta from Strong Schools Maryland.
Good afternoon, members of the AIB. It's good to see you again. My name is Ria Gupta. I am the interim Executive Director of Strong Schools Maryland and co-chair of the Blueprint Coalition. I know staff and board members have been really busy around the state and in Annapolis over the last few weeks. So thank you for your work there. Over the recent weeks, numerous stakeholders have voiced serious concerns about the devastating impacts of the proposed reduction in collaborative time. It is troubling that these discussions occurred only after the board made a decision to recommend pausing collaborative time. This decision was made in a special meeting without proper public engagement or thorough consultation with all affected parties. Such a rushed process undermines the integrity of decision-making and fails to consider the diverse needs of our communities. This change represents the most significant modification to the blueprint since its passage, made in just one public meeting. While it is true that we are experiencing a teacher shortage, one we have been acknowledging for over a decade and has been brewing for longer, this is only one of several critical realities. School leaders and representatives from organizations like PZAM and MSEA have repeatedly emphasized the devastating impact the reduction collaborative time would have on our school systems. To Marylanders, this decision is a means to address budget shortfalls rather than prioritizing the needs of our schools. The law assigns the AIB the responsibility to determine whether the funds provided by the state and local governments are consistent with the board's estimate of what is necessary to fully implement the blueprint. We believe there is a viable path forward. We can innovate statewide through community partnerships to create spaces for teacher collaboration during the day, adopt flexible schedules, introduce tutoring programs for new literacy and math initiatives, and support new and conditionally certified teachers who need collaborative time the most. I urge the board to reconsider the delay of collaboration time and engage in a more inclusive and transparent decision-making process to ensure the blueprint is implemented effectively, benefiting all students and educators. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments again. And great seeing you again. All right, there is an additional direct testimony for today. In person.
Ms. Smith, do we have anyone else who signed up?
No.
Okay. That is it for public comment.
Thank you. All right, I think we'll go now to the agenda item number three, which is the Blueprint Implementation Plan Review Status. I'll turn it over to Executive Director Heiss.
Thank you very much. So with this item, just a reminder about the various components of the 2024 LEA Blueprint Implementation Plans that the AIB has been considering approval of over the past several months. And as of before this meeting, the board has approved 20 LEA plans with full approval and three LEAs received conditional approval. And today we have additional plans to be, that are recommended for full approval. Next slide. So, Emma, can you go to the, thank you. So for Career Letter was one of the components of plans that were not fully able to be approved by the board. And you can see here that 23, well, really 22 plans have, Career Letter plans have been fully approved with two that have been conditionally approved. Today, we are recommending approval, full approval of Anarundel County's Career Letter Plan. As you recall, what was missing in December when they received conditional approval was a fully signed and executed document between the school system and the teachers' union. And we did receive that in December. And so staff is recommending that Anarundel County move to full approval. Montgomery County is still pending. We're still awaiting receipt of their final signed documents. So they are still going to remain as conditional approval. And we'll talk about the next steps for that in a couple of slides. Next slide. The other component that several LEAs were not fully approved for is the Career Counseling MOUs. Today, we are recommending the two remaining LEAs that did not have Career Counseling MOUs for approval. The first is Baltimore County, which had not received conditional approval yet, awaiting the submission of their Career Counseling MOU. We did receive that last week and, or January 16th. And based upon the review of the, what Baltimore County submitted, which was signed by all parties, we're recommending approval of Baltimore County's Career Counseling MOU. And then, secondly, Prince George's County had received conditional approval in December, awaiting the receipt of those signed documents. And we did receive those just earlier this week. And because we do have those fully signed executed documents, we're also recommending approval of Prince George's County's Career Counseling MOU. Next slide. And so that would mean we would be recommending a total of three LEA plans for full approval today. And with the full approval would be the release of those automatically withheld blueprint funds for Anarundel County, Baltimore County, and Prince George's County. And we do have a motion to that effect for you when you're ready. The next slide are really the next steps. And so that will leave with this approval. Montgomery County, which has let us know that they are in the process of getting their career letter, final career letter documents signed and will be submitting them to us in early February. At the December board meeting, the board adopted a deadline of February 15th to receive those documents. And then the board also adopted a date of April 17th, by which final decisions would need to be made regarding approval of LEA plans and release of fiscal 25 blueprint funds. With that, if there are any questions, we will happy to, you can go. Sorry, Emma, we're not ready to move on yet. So actually, can you go back one?
Let me go back again on Montgomery County. Their meeting when?
They have already, so they submitted their, what they were missing was their, the maintenance of certification, the agreed upon amount that they would pay for the first maintenance of certification. They have reached an agreement on that. However, they do not have the signed executed document between the school system and the union that, you know, officially makes that agreement. And so we're just waiting on the signed document, but they have reached an agreement on that amount.
Thank you.
We just are waiting on the signed document.
All right.
And they've indicated that they'll be able to make that deadline.
All right, thank you. Are we ready for the motion? Or is there anything else we need to invest in that?
And if there are no questions, we're ready.
Why don't you read the motion?
Absolutely, give me one second. Okay, so the motion is, "After careful consideration of the recommendations of the AIB staff and MSDE, and based on the board's own independent review of all documents provided by the LEAs, the motion is for the board to approve the 2024 Blueprint Implementation Plans submitted by the following LEAs and authorized release of the fiscal 25 blueprint funds that are automatically withheld by law, and to clarify that the board's approval extends only to the elements of career letters that are set forth in a fully executed agreement between the LEA and the education, local education association." And the three LEAs again are Anarundel County, Baltimore County, and Prince George's County.
I saw a move, the aforementioned motion. They're second to the motion.
All second.
Okay, the move in property second. We are now prepared for any comments, the questions that you may have at this point in time, reference to the motion. Let me just offer one comment. That is to thank all of the 23 counties that have now meet the, met the approval stage. Unfortunately, the one that we still have hanging out there is my home county, Montgomery County. But I've been assured that, in due order, that they will be approved as well. This has been an awful lot of work, but I think very productive work getting us to this point and for all the things that our LEAs have done over the last year or so in preparation for this. So this is not something we take lightly. We are serious about it. And this is why we follow this very challenging process to make sure that we complete the work. Without having an executed document and a plan before us, we will be left astray in terms of what we will be doing in reference to the, in reference to the blueprint. This provides us with a roadmap, a process that we can all follow and understand to hold all of those who are responsible for providing a plan to us, responsible and to implement this with fidelity. Without this, then we will be led astray in terms of the changes that need to be made, how they're to be made, and the timeframe which would make those changes and who, more importantly, is responsible so doing. So it may seem somewhat tedious to others. I know that it is cumbersome. This is new. And so what I stated when we first started this process a couple of years ago, it would take us some time to adjust to it, that it would not be easy, but it is important. And as we go forward, we will continue to make improvements and work with you to make the submission even more efficient and approvable from the start. But this is important. So I do not want you to assume that we take lightly the amount of work and efforts that have been made at the local jurisdiction for the work and your compliance reporting backs. With that, unless there are any additional questions or comments?
There, there is a question from Vice Chair Kerwin.
Yes, thank you. How long will these plans be in place before there's a mandated update?
That's an excellent question. And I was thinking that would be a good thing to share. So the plans that are being approved in general are five-year plans. So they now, between last year's plan and this year's plan, they cover a five-year period through the '26-'27 school year. And we did share at the joint board meeting on Tuesday the beginning of a development of a process to monitor progress over the next several years before a new plan or a revised plan will need to be submitted. That process, as we staff, working with MSDE and AIB, and we're also consulting with the superintendents, would be, the proposal would be that they not need to submit a new full plan until 2027, but they would have the opportunity to amend their plan if they had made significant changes in strategy, implementation strategies. That is what is sort of under consideration right now. For some elements of the plan, they, there will be additional submissions that will be required. So for example, the Career Letter, there is, LEAs are working on Level Four of the Teacher Leadership Track. We only required them to submit levels one to three for this year's plan. So they will be submitting Level Four of the Teacher Track on July 1. We also shared at the board meeting on Tuesday that other elements that were originally going to also be due in 2025 of the Career Letter, including the Administrator Track, that we are proposing to delay that submission, provide the LEAs with more time to develop their Administrator Track of the Career Letter, particularly as MSDE and AIB are working to provide guidance on that. So they will not have to submit as much on July 1st and was, as was originally going to be due. But there is that submission July 1st. And then the Career Counseling MOUs are an annual update, depending on how long, how long the parties have agreed to put the MOU in place.
A follow-up question. Of course, it's one thing to have a plan. It's another thing to execute it faithfully. So could you just say a little more about how their implementation of their plan will be monitored and apprised?
Sure, I mean, even now, AIB and MSDE staff, you know, we meet regularly with blueprint coordinators. And, and we also have the strategic facilitators that are working with many of the LEAs. So we do have a, you know, we are sort of monitoring progress and implementation of their plans as they submitted them through various, you know, informal ways, shall we say. But what we're developing as a proposal that we will be bringing back to the board for approval in the spring is a series of conferences to be held with the superintendents and their teams that are implementing the blueprint so that they can share, you know, both their, what progress they're making, what challenges they're seeing in implementation, as well as look, AIB and MSDE staff would be looking at the data around particularly the aligned metrics that both boards have adopted to see what progress is being made in terms of meeting those, the timelines and those metrics. And so we're going to be developing, sharing and working with the superintendents to try to identify sort of what the components of these conferences would be. And, you know, sort of the balance between, you know, what, what they would have an opportunity to share and what we would want to make sure that we're learning from every LEA in terms of around key critical elements of the blueprint. You know, whether they are implementing their plan, whether they have changed their plan in response to challenges that they faced. And then how to document that whole process is also something that we need to think about so that AIB and MSDE staff can come back to the board with a recommendation around whether, as we move into this next phase of implementation accountability, whether LEAs are making sufficient progress in implementing the blueprint.
Great, I'm very pleased to hear you'll be bringing that back, that review of implementation back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I don't see any.
Okay. We're ready for the question now, I guess?
Yep, the motion was made and seconded.
Right. All in favor of the approval of the recommendation before you? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Stand up. Thank you, the ayes have it and they are so approved. Thank you.
Great. Next, we just wanted to give a brief update on the state, status of the state agency implementation plans. And I would ask Emma Pellerin, the implementation plan director, to provide that.
Absolutely. So just a brief update about progress since our last meeting where we, where the board approved the implementation plan and update submitted by the consortium, Consortium on Coordinated Community Supports. Since then, AIB staff have continued to meet with state agency staff from the remaining state agency plans that are, have not been approved yet and have not been recommended for approval yet. That includes the State Department of Education Plan, MHEC CTE Committee, and the Juvenile Services Education Program. And again, AIB staff have continued to meet with their staff to discuss the status of their plan, to provide feedback and requests for updates based off of their review of the, of each plan. And as these updates and revisions have been submitted, AIB staff are continuing to review those updates to their plans. And once those updates have helped the updated plan meet the criteria for success, we will be bringing those plans for recommendations, with, with recommendations for approval to the board as, as they come in. Yes, Vice Chair Kerwin.
Yes, is there a statutory deadline by which these plans were, are, or were to be approved?
No, there is not. We are, we have, we did provided feedback as soon as possible and are continuing to, to move to get these plans updated and to provide recommendations as soon as we can, but there is no statutory requirement.
My concern is that, you know, we're several years now into the implementation and we don't have approved plans from these agencies. And so when you say that we're still in, I mean, is there any, will this, will, will be, be in a position to approve these by June? What, what's, what's a sort of projected timeline?
We did approve the implementation, or the board approved the implementation plans from the state agencies that were submitted in 2023, so there are plans that were submitted, the initial implementation plans that were approved. But I also saw the Executive Director Heiss wanted, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Emma, you said exactly what I was going to say. So I just want to be clear, similar to the LEAs, the state agencies submitted plans in 2023 and all of those plans have been approved. The, the state agencies were asked to submit plans to cover that period through the 26, 27 school year and it is that plan that we are providing feedback and going through the process of revisions with the agencies. I think we are very close on several plans to be able to bring them for approval. We, we actually were hopeful that we would be able to bring at least one to the board for approval today, but unfortunately, we just don't, don't, didn't receive the resubmissions that, that we were hoping for in time to bring a recommendation of approval. So I, I believe that we particularly for MSDE, MHEC and the CTE Committee, I think that we're on a path for recommending approval, you know, in the next several months. The juvenile services plan was actually submitted later than the other plans and so it is possible that, that that one might take a little bit longer. But we are working with what is referred to as JSEP to support, helping them revise their plan. So we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to bring all of these to you for approval, you know, before, before June.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good news.
Any other questions?
I don't recognize any, okay, we can move on.
Great. Okay, the next agenda item is actually also, Emma. And this relates to the blueprint interim evaluation that is required by statute and if you want to go to the next slide, Arshia, please. And so an RFP was issued in October for this required interim evaluation. And as a reminder, the timeline was changed during the last legislative session. So the interim evaluation has to be completed by December 1 of 2026. And then the AIB is required to submit that interim evaluation and recommendations for any changes, particularly to the law around blueprint implementation by January 15 of 2027. So the RFP was issued in October and proposals were due in November and six proposals were received and evaluated. So we've been going through that process over the past two months or so. And I would like to now turn this over to Ms. Pellerin again, who led the evaluation committee, the evaluation, evaluation committee that, that recommended the award.
Thank you. Actually, if you wouldn't mind just going back quickly to the last slide, there's just one bullet point I wanted to highlight. Just as Executive Director Heiss said, we received six proposals that were evaluated against the criteria that are outlined in the request for proposal that's available on the AIB website. All six proposals met submission requirements, including the 10% minority business enterprise goal. And then in addition to those submission requirements, they were evaluated against the criteria that's in the RFP. So Arshia, if we could go to the next slide, we can, you'll see the proposal about evaluation criteria listed here. I won't read through each one, but just wanted to highlight some key components that were part of the evaluation and really, you know, ultimately led to our recommendation for the award. This includes experience in conducting large-scale systems change evaluations and understanding of systems change. Of course, the ability and evidence of qualified personnel to perform the evaluation and the cost associated with performing those services, as well as just the overall quality of the proposal and the proposed work plan that's embedded in the proposal. Those were all, you know, really key components of the, of the proposal and what was reviewed by the evaluation of the evaluation committee. So given that, actually, we can go to the next slide. After reviewing the, each proposal and evaluating it against the criteria and meeting with each proposer, the evaluation committee and AIB staff recommend NORC at the University of Chicago as the awarty of the contract for the blueprint interim evaluation services in the amount of $766,790. AIB staff based this decision on NORC's approach to this evaluation, their capacity to perform it within the specified timeframe, which was discussed earlier, and the efficient and effective delivery of services in a manner that is most advantageous to AIB as reflected in its proposal. And I'd also love to just share a little more about NORC at the University of Chicago. It is NORC as it's more commonly known instead of NORC at the University of Chicago. It's an affiliate, an affiliate of the university. It's important to know though that NORC has corporate headquarters here in Bethesda in Maryland and that they have staff that live in and work throughout the state. And the subcontractor for the proposal, Chrysalis Communications, is located in Baltimore, so definitely have deep roots and understanding of the Baltimore landscape. NORC conducts nonpartisan research and analysis for public agencies and organizations around the world. And they are a global leader in systems change evaluation and again have a very deep understanding of and expertise in systems change that was evident in their approach to the evaluation. And for those who might not be really familiar with the term systems change, who might be watching from home or just to provide more context for this, we're talking about a profound and enduring change in the way that members and elements of a system act and interact, the way that they operate with each other. And when we're talking about that, we're also, you know, creating a system that results in dramatically different processes and outcomes and ways that systems and elements of a system interact with one another. And, you know, as I'm saying all these things with these dramatic changes and outcomes and impact, of course, that's at the foundation of the blueprint. So that's something that we just wanted to elevate as part of their proposal. Again, NORC has a lot of experience in evaluating complex systems change evaluation as well as conducting evaluations of education systems and policies at the state, local and federal levels, working with diverse partners. They also have experience in budget analysis as well as the use of quantitative and qualitative approaches to data collection analysis. And as I said earlier, they have deep roots and an understanding of the Maryland landscape. Pause here and see, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Go back to the slide on the standards criteria for review, slide back, okay. When we say the first one, experience and, experience in conducting large-scale system change evaluation, my assumption based in that standard would be system change also as it relates to education because there are different changes and one may look at what they are doing, which I think emanated outside of education. So I just want to make sure that that is covered in terms of anyone who may look at this and raise a question about it.
Yes, yes, certainly. That was provided in the proposal in terms of examples of systems change evaluation in education as well as community-based initiatives and in other spheres of work outside of education, but yes, certainly in education.
Okay, thank you. All right, we had the evaluation before, so any questions about the selection process and the selected?
There are questions, but before we do that, I just wanted to add that the proposal evaluation criteria shown here are very important, but there were, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the minimum qualifications and the mandatory qualifications included understanding the blueprint's goals and theory of action, evidence of engagement of a diverse range of partners and, and individuals in previous work, evaluation work, experience in evaluating federal, state, or district education policy, and experience in budget analysis. And Mr. Chair, to your point, the mandatory qualification was that they have experience in conducting complex systems change and then the preferred qualification was that they have experience in conducting evaluation of education systems. And in NORC's case, they have both of those pieces of experience. I just wanted to add that context and then I believe Vice Chair Kerwin has a question.
Could you give some examples of clients they serve, have served?
Yes, absolutely. There's quite a few that they listed in their proposal. I won't go through all of them. We could be here for a little while, but I'll highlight a few. The Gates Foundation, they were selected by Sorry, was there a question?
No.
Okay.
Keep going, Emma.
They were selected by the Gates Foundation to lead a curriculum and learning improvement project consortium to build a data ecosystem of existing learning management and student information systems for, from curriculum providers. They've partnered with Fulton County Public Schools in Georgia to, where they focus on conducting developmental evaluations to enhance the district's literacy practices. They also conducted, are, and are conducting an ongoing evaluation with Denver Preschool Program to look at outcomes and reading achievement, grade retention and chronic absenteeism. They've evaluated community systems change initiatives that have been spearheaded by the Kaufman Foundation and the Walton Family Foundation. They have conducted an evaluation of a safety and justice challenge by the MacArthur Foundation that's focused on reducing jail incarceration and racial and ethnic disparities in jail usage. They've also worked with the Washington State Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, Oakland Promises Program in California that focuses on their cradle-to-career program and completion of college for Oakland students. They've led studies that have been funded by the Institution of Education Sciences and the U.S. Department of Education on a literacy program as well as getting effective leadership into high need schools. And then between the NORC as well as Chrysalis Communications, the subcontractor, they also have conducted studies of initiatives based here in Maryland, including a telehealth survey, COVID-19 contact tracing study, a study of the IEP process and adequate funding for students with disabilities in Maryland. And then they've also worked on a ADA self-evaluation with Montgomery College.
And in, in the, in the process, I, I assume you had, you made calls to these clients to get their assessment of, of NORC's that was part of the process, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they provided a list of references and we contacted all of them.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I saw another hand, I think it was a member of Minko's hand.
Yeah, I actually was gonna ask a similar question to Dr. Kerwin, but can you talk a little bit about the, the responses from when you went and did the calls to previous clients? What did they say? You know, were they able to verify the effectiveness of NORC as a, as an evaluation partner? What were the strengths? Were there any challenges, red flags that were surfaced?
Certainly, yes. And if anyone has any questions or anything regarding that, but yes, we were able to get in touch with almost all of the references listed. And there were no red flags raised. I think, you know, in terms of highlights, there was just a real emphasis on the project management approach, considering that there's lots of different activities and needs to potentially shift, you know, approaches over time, especially with evaluations that take a considerable amount of time. That was something that was highlighted in the references that we conducted, you know, that NORC's ability to manage these projects, manage such vast projects and to also, you know, when needed, to pivot and to adapt its approach in working with the client. So that, those were, you know, some of the strengths that were, were highlighted across the references. Yeah, where, you know, there were some really glowing remarks. Folks really, you know, without any hesitations that, that they would continue to work with them again if given the opportunity. That was one big question that we had. And I think, you know, another thing that we saw in the references as well as the proposal is just an emphasis on working with the client as a partner to help design evaluation. That is something that is really key, especially when we're looking at the blueprint, considering again, the systems change nature of it, as well as all the other factors that we know have gone into the blueprint and we articulated this in the RFP, but considering how the blueprint started, all the things that have happened since the blueprint legislation was passed, you know, those were all significant and will be, need to be considered as part of the evaluation of the blueprint's impact and outcomes.
You, you've already touched on bits and pieces of this, but if you were to kind of summarize and say, what are the one or two things that really put their proposal head and shoulders above the other five proposals? What would those things be?
I will also, sorry, Executive Director Heiss, if you wanted to also comment as well, but for me, I would say that again, NORC's approach to and understanding of systems change was reflected throughout the proposal, not just in discrete activities or ways to implement specific activities or tasks that were part of its evaluation plan, but it was really reflective, reflected throughout its introduction, introduction of team members, the references to past work that they've conducted in systems change initiatives and evaluations of systems change in how, again, they're approaching the evaluation. That really, you know, stood out throughout the proposal. But Executive Director Heiss, if there's other things that you would also like to highlight?
Thanks. Yeah, no, just building on what you said, Emma, I think. Thanks. Yeah, no, just building on what you said, Emma. I think, you know, we had several good proposals, but I think what led to, what NORC did exceptionally well is think about when, when we think of a systems change, you know, it's sort of a, it's a term that maybe is, is hard to understand. But what I would say is that I think as we look at the theory of action and we think about how the pillars interact with each other to support different aspects of the blueprint and lead to the outcomes that we are trying to achieve, NORC did a very good job of sort of taking that theory of action and, and developing a proposal that it was not siloed by pillar, but is actually trying to measure how all of those pieces are working together to support or not. So that's the evaluation, to support achieving the outcomes. So I, I, I think that was certainly one of the highlights.
There's also a lens of understanding that implementation can be on a spectrum and that there's not just a, to what you were saying before, Executive Director Heis, there's not like a, you, you have a concrete task that's been accomplished and we can check things off. There's, there's a lot of things that need to be considered as part of this. And that was, again, very much reflected in NORC's proposal.
Are there any other questions?
Any questions? Oh, just a timeframe again. When was the timeframe? I, I, you may have stated before, timeframe.
For the evaluation, the study would be conducted and completed in December of 2026 with, to the AIB, and then recommendations would go to the Governor and General Assembly from the AIB based off of the report in January of 2027.
That, that's in statute or anything, or regulation?
It's in statute. It's in statute. Yes. And what we did include in the RFP in terms of timeline is that the evaluation plan, so the first step would be the co-development of the evaluation plan. And certainly the framework for that was in their proposal, but the RFP calls for, you know, whoever was selected to work with AIB to co-develop that evaluation plan. And then we would be bringing that evaluation plan to the board for consideration before moving ahead with the next phase of the evaluation. So I believe that would be in roughly three months from when the contract is actually executed. I believe I saw Dr. Stapleton's hand.
I was just going to ask a little bit about that, just what are the next steps? Because I do believe that the board will, based on what I've read of their proposal, the board would be sort of activated and giving feedback and stakeholder meetings.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Minko?
Yeah, just the, the part of the review team that went through and looked at the various proposals were folks from MSD also included in that review team and are they, because it seems like they will be involved in some of the data collection and, and will help to inform aspects of this. So just wanted to see what their level of involvement was or their awareness that NORC has recommended as the, as the evaluator.
No, MSD, because MSD is part of, is one of the entities, the agency is responsible for implementing the blueprint, they will actually be a part, you know, their, their, their work will be part of the evaluation. And so because of that, they were not included in, on the evaluation committee or as part of this process. But certainly, we've been working with MSD and with the Longitudinal Data Systems Center to develop data, not just data collection protocols, but, you know, access to data so that whoever was selected would, would be able to have access to the data that they need to do the evaluation. And so certainly we'll be working with MSD and other partners to make sure that NORC, in this case, does have access to all the data.
Thanks so much.
Any further questions or comments? Let me thank the staff for your hard work and making this recommendation and all the time and efforts that you put in to get us to this point. So thank you. I think now we need to have a motion to approve the award of NORC at University of Chicago.
Do you like me to read the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, the motion is to approve the selection of NORC at the University of Chicago as the awardee of the Contract for Blueprint Interim Evaluation Services per RFP number 25-001 in the amount of $766,790.77 and to delegate to the Executive Director, the authority to enter into a contract with NORC that is consistent with the requirements of the RFP and NORC's technical and financial proposals.
Okay, I shall move. They're second to the motion.
My second?
Moved in property second, and we award the interim evaluation to NORC at the University of Chicago, the amount of $766,790.77. All $790.00, I'm sorry. All right. Any questions or comments regarding the motion itself? If not, we're now ready for the question and motion to be voted on. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing us saying none, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and thanks to staff again for all of your hard work and putting this together.
Yes, and if I can just thank our external partners who did participate on the evaluation committee.
Okay.
We appreciate all of their support.
Do you know who they are by hand?
Yes. Is it, Heidi, is it okay to identify them? I assume it is.
Yes.
Okay. Bess Armstrong from Maryland Longitudinal Data Systems Center and Jane Linco, who is a professor at the University of Maryland, Baltimore County.
Thank you. All right, let's go now to Executive Director's report. Ms. Heis.
Thank you. So the first item is the staffing update and very pleased to introduce our new Government Relations Director. Officially, Joyce Schaefer has joined the team. And Joy, I'll give her a moment to introduce herself, but Joy will be familiar to many as she was a member of the Kerwin Commission and actually chaired what was called Policy Area Four at the time, the work group that developed the recommendations around pillar four and more resources for students to be successful. Joy?
Thank you. I, I just want to say again how, how excited I am to be working to, as part of a team that will hopefully see the entire blueprint to fruition. So it's very personally meaningful for me and professionally meaningful for me. So, and I've, I've had a really wonderful supportive welcome. So I'm, I'm really excited and proud to join such a high performing staff as well.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
We are, we are, we are lucky to have Joy. And she's already been, she's already been in Indianapolis doing, doing the thing. So Joy is gonna provide some of the legislative update in, in a minute. But on staffing, we are gearing up to repost for two positions that we have not been able to fill in previous recruitments related to early childhood policy analyst and a financial data analyst. And so those will be coming soon, as well as a fiscal administrator to support the internal operations of the agency, which is a new position. And and then I think that will leave us with three, two or three vacancies at this point that we're gonna continue to, to work to, to fill those positions. And we're gonna make some internal reorganization adjustments that we'll be bringing back to the board as well.
Okay.
If there are no questions about staffing, we can move to the legislative update. And I will turn it over to Joy.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share some, a broad sort of high level overview of the legislative session since you're receiving your first update today. And as you know, the session started, the 90-day session convened January 8th, and signee die is April 7th. And we are tracking specific bills related to the budget, bills with a direct or indirect impact to the blueprint, as well as P-20 legislation. And then you'll be updated as you are being updated here at regular AIB meetings, as well as weekly with the legislative update that you'll be receiving. And or she, if you want to go to the next slide. I do want to say that I know that there are not that many bills. It seems like a little bit of a slow start, but just to note that bills are still being able to be turned in. The Senate bill deadline is February 3rd, which is Monday. The House has until Friday, the 7th. So I fully expect the number of bills to even double in terms of what the, the number is right now. And you all have provided a briefing to both the Senate Education, Energy, and the Environment Committee just yesterday. And last week, a joint committee meeting between, of the House Appropriations and Ways and Means Committee. And I think that was, that was our education, both of those, all of those committees, education blueprint briefing. And they got quite a lot of information and there was a, a lot of robust discussion. So Executive Director Heis is gonna lead you through a couple of, lead you through some high level overview of a couple of key pieces of legislation.
Thank you, Joy. So at this point, obviously, the Governor's Budget Bill and some of the contingent actions within the budget are this year have a potential large impact on the blueprint. So we wanted to start with the budget. The first item is really, provides an update on how much is provided in the budget. So the LEAs are receiving an increase of $551 million in the Governor's Budget. And those are formula funds that are provided in the blueprint. That's an increase of 6.1%, and it's a combination of the formula, for blueprint formulas, as well as general funds to support increases in other education aid programs, such as transportation that are funded with general funds. We wanted to share just some of the inputs that are driving the increase in blueprint funds for the LEAs this year, well, for the upcoming fiscal year. And that includes additional National Board certified teachers. And I, you can see here, some of these percentages and numbers are not going to match other data that we've shared because the, the, it's the number of National Board teachers as of a certain date that are being counted in the, in the funding formula. But we do have over 1,500 additional National Board certified teachers that will be receiving the supplement, at least the 10,000, as well as possibly the low performing school supplement of $7,000. There's also a large increase in the number of college and career-ready students, 68,500, which is supporting additional CCR funding for the LEAs to provide those post-CCR pathways to high school students. We also saw a growth in pre-K and full day pre-K enrollment of over 12%, which is increasing the pre-K funding formula. And then for the Concentration of Poverty Program, the per pupil grant phases in, and schools that are at 60% concentration of poverty are receiving the per pupil funds in the Fiscal 26 Budget this year. So all of those things are contributing to that $551 million increase in the Governor's Budget for education. The next three bullets relate to proposed reductions to funding in the Fiscal 26 Budget. And the first item, so there, there, the budget includes what are called contingent reductions. So in order for the cuts to happen, legislation has to pass in a different bill. It can't just be done in the budget bill. It requires a passage of a separate law. So in all of these cases, these are contingent reductions. It includes reductions, and we'll talk more about the Governor's Education Bill in a minute, but the proposal to delay collaborative funding, collaborative time funding begins in Fiscal 26 under the Governor's Bill. And it's a combination of the impact on the foundation program, as well as those ancillary impacts on compensatory education, multilingual learner formulas. And there are some other formula, small formulas that are affected by this change in the Governor's Bill. That totals $123 million in blueprint funds that would be reduced from the Governor's Budget. That, I just want to be clear, the $551 million increase is separate from the $123 million. So the LEAs do receive that $551 million increase after this reduction, proposed reduction. There's also a proposed reduction that relates to non-blueprint programs, but we just wanted to make you aware of these. There are a couple of programs that the Governor's Budget is proposing that the county governments pick up a larger share of the cost related to the local share of teachers' retirement and the local share of non-public placements. So those are, and, and there's another very small item, couple of items. But those are contingent on what is called the Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act, which is more of an omnibus bill that is used to, when, when, when the budget is introduced is, so the Governor has to introduce a balanced budget and the legislature has to pass a balanced budget. So the Burfa, as it's referred to, is the legislative mechanism that provides for altering laws in order to have a balanced budget. And then the last item on this slide relates to the Consortium on Coordinated Community Supports. In the blueprint law, the consortium, as we refer to it, receives $130 million each year to support grants, to support students and their behavioral health needs in their communities. And the Governor is proposing to reduce that to $40 million each year, which is something that the legislature did as a one-time action last year. And that would result in in fiscal 26, a $90 million reduction. And in this case, it is blueprint funds. So you can see that there are it's a combination of general funds and blueprint funds that support K 12 education. But right now it is the blueprint fund that is fully supporting the blueprint programs. And we have a slide about that in a in a few slides as well. I see a couple of hands, so I will go ahead and pause to take questions now.
I think we see Dr. Curran and then Member Lynch.
Yes.
Member Lynch, you go first.
Okay, well, I just my questions were the proposed reductions to the foundation compet, all of that. Can you talk for just a second about the impact of those reductions on then local responsibilities? You know, like what local government responsibilities are in in sort of like those that funding formula? And then sort of in that same space, as we're talking about increasing the local share of teachers requirement retirement, sort of what that impact? And I guess part of what I'm thinking about is that we know that we've heard from many of our local jurisdictions concerns about, you know, sort of being able to to manage blueprint funds on very tight local budgets. And so I'm just wondering, do those things sort of offset each other? Or is like sort of what is the relationship of cut cuts versus in increased requirements for local governments?
Well, I will do my best. I will say that it's early days in in the the budget information and also more detailed fiscal note information around the impact of the governor's Burfa and the governor's education bill. But broadly, those formulas, foundation, compensatory education, multilingual learners and others, they have a state share and a local share. And so the dollars that are shown here as savings, the 123 million, that represents the state share of those formulas that would be reduced or or saved. The local share is statewide, it is 50% state, 50% local share. Now that varies by county based on their local wealth. So wealthier counties have a higher local share unless wealthy counties have a lower local share. So the amount of savings will vary. But Ellie, but there there will be a savings for the county governments, for most county governments in addition to the state savings. And it's it's a good question about to the extent that that off is offset by this increase in the local share of teachers retirement and non public placements. I mean, in in the total amounts, it's a very close offset, but county by county, it may not be. So we we can certainly, as we get more information, we can we can take a look at that. I think that I can just share that I think that the governor is also making some other revenue proposals particularly around income tax rates. And of course, we need to wait for the fiscal note for those provisions to see what what the revenue estimates are, but it's my understanding that county governments would receive additional revenues based on those changes, which I think are also intended to be an offset to those shifting of local share costs to the counties.
I have another question, but I want I want to let Dr. Curran go first. I think he has the same question I do. I'm going to let you go because I think you may have the same.
I don't know. I probably don't, but the first of all, it it's pre K. The first bullet, it's pre K through 12 education aid, right? I mean, we are.
Yes, that is an that is.
And we're I'm very, we're all very sensitive to include pre K. So I just wanted to make that point.
Yes.
You say in aid increases 50, but general funds and blueprint funds. The so so there's increases in pre K through 12 education not tied to the blueprint. Is that correct? Because all the blueprint is special funds.
Correct.
Okay. So do you have do you have any idea how that breaks down the the 51 million between blueprint funds and general funds?
I don't. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm just looking at one of the one of the main programs that is general funded and not supported with blueprint is student transportation. And that is increasing what I'm looking at about 12.4 million dollars. So it's not, it's not a large increase. So I think the bulk of the other piece that is not that is definitely general funds is teachers retirement, and that is about 62 million. So, you know, I would say it just it looks like it's about less than 100 million general funds and the rest is the blueprint.
That's that's helpful. I I was a little surprised by the last bullet. I was, I I I guess I knew at one time, but I was not. It wasn't at the top of mind that the blueprint helped to support the consortium of coordinated community supports.
Yes, the the consortium.
Was it the primary source of support for that?
It's the only it is. Yeah, it is.
The blueprint funds that.
The blueprint does fund the consortium. It was part of the final legislation that passed the General Assembly and included the consortium and dedicated funding.
Okay, so there's there's a $90 million, so to speak, saving there. What happens to those funds now? Do they go back into the blueprint? Master fund or what?
Yes, any funds from that are spent out of the blueprint fund that are not spent, that are either appropriated or not appropriated, remain in the blueprint fund under the law. Of course, the law can be changed, but under the current law, they remain in the blueprint fund. And actually, Archie, if you could just go to the blueprint fund slide. So maybe we'll just very quickly, since we're talking about the distinction between the blueprint fund and the general fund. So the blueprint for Maryland's Future Fund was established. Actually, I've lost track of what year it was established. I think it was in 2019, but it might have been earlier than that, actually. And it's something that over time, the General Assembly has dedicated additional revenues into the blueprint for Maryland's Future Fund to support implementation of the blueprint. The main sources of funding are gaming funds that go into the Education Trust Fund, which is part of the blueprint fund, as well as sales tax revenues from online purchases. The digital downloads revenues from the digital downloads tax. There's also a digital advertising tax that has not actually gone into effect yet, but if and when it does, those revenues are dedicated to the blueprint as well as sports betting. And some one time revenue sources where dollars have been on a one time basis moved into the blueprint fund. And under the governor's proposal, there are increases to two of the taxes related to gaming, table games and sports betting that would the rev the increased revenues would actually go to the general fund for the first two years and then would accrue to the blueprint fund beginning in fiscal 28. And that would provide about $130 million more for the blueprint fund, according to the Department of Legislative Services.
Okay, and I I did just want to make a point that Chairman Leggett has made on several occasions that these reductions in this year do nothing to help with the state's overall budget deficit. Because the funds that are being reduced to the blueprint are not general funds. And and in that sense, they're they they have they have nothing to do with trying to address this year's budget problem.
Correct. They right. The 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 $3 billion general fund deficit that is projected that the governor in his budget and Burfa is proposing to eliminate that in in various ways is the general fund deficit does not include changes to the blueprint. That is going to accrue to the blueprint fund. Correct. So if there are no more questions at the moment, then we can go back to the slides for the Governor's Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act. So.
Executive Director, can I just ask one one quick question? I'm sorry. So when we look at when when we look at the original budget proposal that that you had put up and it and it talked about reductions to the multilingual learners. And I know we've had some questions about that because we continue to see increases in the number of students. Some of our districts have, you know, close to maybe even a quarter of their students are multilingual learners. And that overall number across the state of Maryland continues to increase. And I I don't know that you have an answer. But I I imagine that it is strategic that these services are being covered or considered in some other way, in some other place that that, you know, we we just recently had a report that was released in October about a plan to address multilingual learners. And so will some of those some of those items start to show up in other places to make sure that the needs of students continue to be addressed?
I think that's an excellent question. I'm not, I think we will need to gather more information about both the impact on those formulas due to the collaborative time savings as well as sort of what what steps could be taken to mitigate that. And I I will just, maybe it's helpful to explain this, but the way that in the law, the foundation program, you know, has a specific amount of money that is intended for collaborative time. And when those amounts are changed, so when the foundation amount changes without a without another change in the law, the percentages that are associated with these other formulas, compensatory education and multilingual learners automatically are receive less because they are a percent of the foundation. And actually, if we can go to the next slide. Again, or she, sorry, there we go. And so in 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 the governor's bill, there is this four year delay proposed in the collaborative time funding. And those are specific amount per pupil amounts that are in the law beginning in fiscal 26 that are then essentially in the governor's bill shifted out for years. So they would begin in fiscal 30 instead of fiscal 26. And it's it's because of the way the law is written, there's the connection between the foundation amount and the other formulas for special education, which is also the same way in current law with as a percent of the foundation. The governor's bill does hold the special education formula harmless for so special education formula is not affected by the collaborative time reduction, but the other two formulas are. And that is really just a function of the way the statute was set up under current law. Not it. It's not a function of collaborative time itself. Because the all of the money for collaborative time is in the foundation formula for all teachers, including multilingual teachers and teachers that might be specifically supporting interventions for students who are who are not meeting proficiency. Vice Chair Kerwin, I see your hand.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Well, I I'm confident I've shared many others concerned that about the reduction in the compensatory education and the multilingual learners. Special, I'm thrilled that special ed is being held harmless, but these other programs in theory could also be, we could still have a reduction in collaborative time and hold these other programs harmless. So that's just something that's on front of mind for me and 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 very, very concerning that these programs are being cut. I saw some analysis that said that we would act as a result of this action and 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 the failure to hold compensatory education harmless that we would be spending less money on a per student basis next year on on compensatory education. Wasn't there a someone did a, I don't know if it's accurate, but I I I remember reading something that made that that assertion.
I I I think that was part of the testimony the other day.
Is that right?
And I've asked for analysis of that. I think Mr. Johnson, if I'm correct, Madam Executive Director
Yes.
who made that assertion. And so we're going to go back to basically reevaluate that. But when I heard that, it sort of stunned me as well.
Yeah, we we've got to get to that very much hope we can. Executive Director Heiss, get to the bottom of that because that just that seemed so troubling that that could occur.
Yes, that is that is a follow up item from that we're taking a look at. And really, we can certainly run numbers, but the fiscal note that the Department of Legislative Services will prepare on the governor's bill will provide, I'm I'm sure great, deep analysis of the fiscal impact of the various components of the bill on the various formulas.
When do you think that will be available?
Right now, the governor's bill has been scheduled for a hearing in the Senate on February 12. And the fiscal note will will be available by the 12th, if not earlier.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
There are. I see Member Robinson and Member Lynch's hand. I'm not sure whose hand was up first. Apologies.
Member Robinson, go. He hasn't spoken.
As soon as I wanted to talk, the announcements came on. So you go ahead.
I I was just going to follow up that I I understand that this that we really have to be fiscally responsible and we're going to have to make some really hard decisions. And so, you know, I I applaud the really difficult decisions and and the work that's been made to make sure that the blueprint continues to be solvent in years to come. I I do hope that at some point in time, though, that we really look deeply at the unintended consequences of servants services to students and our most vulnerable students in particular are students who need the highest level of services. So I'm really thrilled to see that special education formulas are held harmless because we know just how much additional support and training and resources that our special education teachers need in order to provide high quality services for students. And I think that those services, that service profile is not dissimilar from those that are needed of our multilingual learners. And so I do hope that we will consider making sure that our multilingual learners continue continue to have the sports that they need to make, to make progress as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, similarly to what was just shared, I, I was kind of wondering about the testimony that we received yesterday. And I was, I'm grateful that you said, I'll look into, to that to kind of verify those claims because it was pretty shocking when, the testimony. I, I kind of questions on this slide. Are we at this point yet where I could ask questions for this? Or did you want me to hold that? Okay. I wanted, I wanted to know more about expanding the definition of wraparound services and what was meant by that on community schools on this side.
I'm going to ask Joy if she could, I know she was looking at that section specifically and provide some examples.
One second, I'm just going to bring up the the complete list.
While Joy is pulling that, do you have it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Let me just, while, while she's doing that, let me just sort of finish talking about this slide. So the Governor's Bill does include collaborative time, what they call innovation demonstration grants. This is essentially pilot programs for the LEAs to pilot different approaches to implementing collaborative time in the hopes of identifying feasible approaches to doing that at different school levels, elementary, middle, high, as well as different amounts of time, different master schedules to support collaborative time and how, how that can be done. So that collaborative time, we can learn from what LEAs are attempt and, and, and sort of have a pathway forward for when the, when the pause, when collaborative time begins under the Governor's Bill in fiscal twenty thirty. There are also proposed changes to the community schools program under the blueprint. And this includes pausing the increase in the per pupil grant for two years, beginning in fiscal twenty-seven, as well as this expansion of wraparound services and also providing additional staff at MSD to coordinate the community school program. And with that, Joy?
Yep. So just as an example of wraparound services for community schools, extend the learning time. That's before after-school weekends, vision, hearing and dental care services, establishing or expanding school-based health center services, additional folks like social workers, counselors, therapists, psychologists, restorative practice coaches, their behavioral health services. They also provide family and community engagement supports, language classes for, for family and workforce development training, available, other available social services. And then it, the, the law proposes, legislation proposes that the MSD has the authority then to define other services as needed. So it, it gives them the authority to expand what's not already delineated in the law. Wraparound services.
Not actually specifying any, at this point, it's giving them a chance to in the future.
There's a couple, actually, I could just jump in for one second, Joy, sorry about that. They, there is, there is some specific language that talks about services. At, at, this, this is the additional language, addressing chronic absenteeism and the number of highly qualified teachers in a school.
Okay, okay. And, and thank you for that. And then just for clarity, though, on the previous slide, there was the mention that the, the concentration of poverty grant eligibility dropped from sixty-five to fifty percent. That's saying, that's how you affect the number of schools who are in the program. But then Executive Director Heiss, you had just said that for, on this particular slide, that the when we're pausing the growth of the program, that's the per pupil amount is not changing, but the number of schools will change. Is that, am I saying that right? Like if the, if, if the percentage is dropping to sixty percent, you, you have more schools that will become eligible, but they'll get the same amount of money for two years?
Yes. So the way the form, the per pupil formula works, well, the way the formula works is a school is eligible now, we've fully phased in the personnel grant. So all schools that are fifty, have concentration of fifty-five percent or more are receiving the personnel grant. And schools at, in, in, for fiscal twenty-six, schools that are at sixty percent concentration are receiving that per pupil grant. Beginning in fiscal twenty-seven, all schools will receive the per pupil grant because it will drop down that next five percentage points to fifty-five percent. And the per pupil grant will be fully phased in, in fiscal twenty-seven. But then under the Governor's Bill, it will stay at that level, the fiscal twenty-seven level for two years.
So just to clarify this point, this is a very important point. Let's say you're at eighty percent free and reduced lunch. You're getting per pupil funding, you got it last year. Is that correct?
It is, but the per pupil funding amount is phasing up over multiple years. And so it is not fully phased in.
Even for the, even for eighty percent.
Even for the eighty percent.
So, so next year, the children in an eighty percent poverty school will not get the expected increase in per pupil funding. Is that correct?
They, right, that would be, it would be frozen, so it would not increase as on the current schedule in the law.
But if others are coming online, what they will get would be what that new amount is stated, is that correct?
If any schools, if any, if there are new schools that are identified.
Right.
Right. They would, they would receive the personnel grant. And then they would, when they were eligible, they would receive the per pupil grant at that frozen level.
All right. So Member Robinson analysis correct there that, that you can expand the number, but the amount would remain at the more reduced number once they come aboard until it changes. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes.
Member Robinson? I was a little confused, your comment?
That's what I was asking.
Okay.
Yeah. It doesn't limit the eligibility of schools that qualify to become constant, you know, concentration of poverty or community schools.
But it limits them to the, the amount based on.
The amount of per pupil funding.
Got you. Okay. Any other further questions?
We can share, I, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but I can share what the schedule, the current schedule for the phase in of the per pupil funding. So you can see what, what the impact is.
All right.
Member Manko.
I, I thought the Governor's Bill also had some funding and recommendations for expanding teacher recruitment. And that's, so.
Next slide.
Understood. I, I was looking for that and I just didn't know if there was a second slide or not, but yeah, because this is critical because this goes hand in hand with the collaborative time conversation. Because minus these, these incentives around teacher recruitment, we're never going to get to the point where the, the four-year freeze will be unfrozen because we won't have enough teachers. But this is hopefully helping to kind of supercharge the, the teacher recruitment and retention efforts.
All right. Want to go to the next slide? Maybe we can address that, Ms. Heiss?
Yes. So you should be seeing that slide now. So some of the newer initiatives that are in the Governor's Bill include expansion of the Grow Your Own Educators Grant Program, a new teacher relocation incentive grant that provides, I think, two thousand dollars for teachers who relocate to Maryland. There, it also proposes the Interstate Mobility Compact for reciprocity with other states regarding teacher licensure. And then under the teacher retention and development sort of topic, there is the establishment of what's called the Academic Excellence Program in Fund, which is really provides instructional coaches for teachers to support literacy and math particularly. And then there's also a national teacher recruitment campaign. And we talked about some of this at the joint board meeting on Tuesday as well. And then an expansion of the School Leadership Training Program to include not just principals, but aspiring principals, assistant principals, other school-based staff that have an interest in becoming school leaders to address the, not only do we have a teacher shortage, we, we also have a looming school leadership and principal shortage.
No, let me add something because I don't want us to be distracted here. All of these initiatives are wonderful. Some of them build on what the Governors and others have already started last year. There are other suggestions that we heard from Strong School Maryland and many others. All of the potential changes in terms of how we approach retention and recruitment are wonderful. And my view is that all should be on the table for consideration, as well as the pilots and everything else. But what we fail to really fully understand, and I, I keep hearing this repeatedly in the public, is that there is just this one approach, one or two approaches, and then we can quickly turn around the challenges we face with the lack of teachers to meet the plan as we currently envision. If all of these things work and work well, it may over time reduce that number that is required. But none of these things will eliminate this basic problem in the foreseeable future. I mean, within the next two or three years at a minimum, maybe as long as four years. So we need to come to grips with that reality. But we also need to address all of these things that's in the Governor's Budget and everything else. And we should, in order to reduce the problem and come up with ways in which to find some other approaches that will help us in this regard. But the, the belief that this is going to go away anytime soon, even if all of these things are adopted, is unrealistic. We have several other people up. I see Jennifer, Member Lynch and Member Curran.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. This is Member Das.
Oh, Das, I'm sorry.
I'm also, yeah, I'm also in there.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. I just have a question on the Interstate Agreement, the Interstate Mobility Compact. And just trying to get a little more information, description of that. Is it similar to some other compacts or agreements that are in place?
So happy to provide more information. The Interstate Compact is something that several states are considering. And the entire, the whole entire compact is in the, in the proposed bill. So we can provide more of a summary of that for you. But it is something that has been proposed in previous years and discussed. And I imagine that will be the case again this year.
And, and do we know, and I can go back and look at the bill too, but do we know if there's a specified number of states or specified states within that compact?
Maggie, I think you were, you were looking at this and how many states have to sign on before it takes effect?
So I was just looking within the Governor's Bill because a bill, another bill has been introduced that would make the Maryland's entrance into the compact contingent upon ten states. Having entered into the compact before Maryland, I'm just looking to see if that, if that is the case with the Governor's Bill. I'm, I'm not seeing it right away. So maybe Member Das, can I get back to you on that?
Okay.
For the information, thank you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Are you finished? Member Das?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. Member Curran, your hand is up?
Yeah, it was, a member Lynch, she had her hand up maybe ahead of me.
Okay.
But doesn't matter, you can go.
All right.
Okay, could you go back to the previous slide, Rachel? I, I just, I, I wanted to express a thought on, I think we, we have collectively unanimously agreed that the delay in collaborative time is necessary because of the absence of teachers. That was, the, the, the board came to a clear decision. We certainly didn't agree to any any reduction in support for any of the at-promise groups. But we did agree, there was a logic to the delay in collaborative time. At, at least as far as I know, I don't see, I don't, I'm not aware of the logic of delaying the community schools. And what, what is of concern to me is that we, that, that, that the, the, the very population that needs the most attention in order to improve student outcomes are, oh, well, they are, they are the largest population. I'm, I'm sure the, the special ed and the English language learners, you could make the, the same comment about them. But the, if you all remember Superintendent Wright's slide, I believe I'm right in, in her, in showing that although we had some improvement in our NAEP scores, and particularly a fourth grade reading was quite dramatic. But the spread based on economics has grown over the last few years. So the, the very groups that need the increased investment are these at, 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 at-promise groups. And that's what I, you know, find so concerning about this, the proposal to pause the funding for the community school. So just, I just wanted to offer that thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Lynch?
I had a question about the forward slide. When we talk about the establishment of the Maryland Teacher Relocation Incentive Grant, we have traditionally been an import state. And I think part of what has made us even more attractive over Um, and I think part of what has made us even more attractive over uh these past few years has been um our really. Um enticing package, as we heard um in the joint meeting on Tuesday. So I am just curious, are we starting to see? That import export, those numbers shift a little bit, and that's the need for this relocation grant? I mean, I think we certainly know that we want to continue to incentivize our students to. Live, work, learn, play, stay in Maryland, and so we want people to stay here. But I I'm wondering if if part of the relocation is, are we seeing that more and more people are not coming into Maryland?
I'm not sure we've seen that. Have we? Uh, I think there was speculation, at least. I have not seen. That based upon the incentive packages that we provided thus far, real matters and everything else. That we had started receive. At least a great deal of interest from outside of Maryland because that has become somewhat known. But what that has done though. Is spurred other jurisdictions around. To recognize that they may be beginning to get in a competitive disadvantage. And so whatever that. Distribution of attractiveness that we have. Is not likely to remain as wide or as attractive as it once started. That's the concern. So you don't want to wait until. You know, you're faced with that because you need to feel positioned as quickly as possible. So it was part anticipatory. But I'm not sure that there's a lot of big. Numbers that were suggested has already happened. It is to prevent it from happening. If it happened, it'd be at a reduced space. But as I recall, West Virginia, Virginia, for exam- and and. Um, Pennsylvania and probably even Delaware had improved or had at least legislation. To improve their teachers' um. Um, package that would make them a little bit more attractive. And would offset potentially some of what was happening here.
Mm hmm. I mean, I think we our our numbers continue to suggest that we are are a predominant import state.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think what I what I will offer just as a knowledge base is that, um, you know, especially um in in our westernmost parts of of Maryland and in some of our southern tips of Maryland. We see that there are neighboring states that offer in-state reciprocity for um student tuition. And and so what I do offer is that there's opportunities for students who are Maryland students to leave the state of Maryland. Um. For their education, come back.
Right.
And receive the in-state, the, you know, receive that additional bonus than as as having received a- as sort of moving back in and. Um, so I I think we want to bring as many people as we possibly can, but I think what we also don't want to do is inadvertently create a situation in which we are enticing. Uh, Marylanders to leave the state of Maryland to get their education because it it then becomes more lucrative for them to come back in. Um, later, and certainly, you know, we want to continue to explore ways to have our our Marylanders who understand the communities in which they live and have grown up in. To continue to find value in staying here and serving in Maryland.
Yeah. Well, we have to, I think we have to wait a little bit, make sure we, uh, but what's something we need to say on top of. We have both. On the end of people beginning their college career, maybe being attracted away. And we also have, keep in mind, the retention problem. That um, at least in the numbers that we saw a few years back, was also a problem. You can't really grow. Very much if, on the other hand, you're losing as many as you are attracting in um at the same time. Uh, any other person up at this point in time? I don't see any, uh, Madam Executive Director?
Just double checking. I do not. Nope, I don't see any hands.
Okay.
That is what we had for the legislative update. Um, and obviously. We uh will work on um gathering more information to address your questions and more information will become available. As the fiscal notes are completed um on on the various bills and um we can. Share that information with you.
All right. Anything else we need to go through in terms of the financial? Uh, technical assistance grant update?
So we have a very, you know, quick update for you on uh finance update. Um, in terms of the technical assistance grant program. Uh, we did, um, you know, we had originally for phase one, which was um from from uh fiscal twenty-four. With the strategic facilitators, we did provide a no cost extension to many of our uh LEAs. Um. Of their phase one uh grant into the current fiscal year. There are five LEAs that uh are still um have grant funds to. Expend under their phase one grant. So we did uh allow five LEAs to extend that no cost extension. Uh, until May thirtieth of twenty-five. And uh for those LEAs that are still spending down their phase one grant, we have not provided a phase two grant. So we are um doing our best to be good fiscal stewards of of our grant dollars and make them go as far as they can. And so. Uh, we uh we really are. Making sure that the phase one dollars are all spent before we award a phase two grant. Uh, or at least that they're on a path to spending all of the money. We we also try to make a phase two award so that there's no break. In 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 service or break in the work to be provided to the LEAs. Um, so. Uh, for phase two, uh, between the strategic facilitators, resource allocation. Partners, um, and then uh. The other focus areas uh for career ladder, pre-K expansion and CCR. We have um awarded three point six million dollars um to date. Um, and um. Uh. Are hoping to uh be able to. Have as much of those dollars be expended before the end of fiscal year as possible.
Yeah.
Um, we also did wanted to share. Um, as part of the governor's fiscal twenty-six budget, the AIB, of course, has its um allowance and um. Uh. Just at a high level, there were two items that. Last year, um, we received uh additional funds. To support, um, one is for office space. Um, and we uh have received those funds. We've received them in fiscal twenty-five. And we uh are receiving funds to support uh office space lease in fiscal twenty-six. We will be uh coming back to you in February with an update. On our office space. Um. We are uh very hopeful that we will uh be able to bring. You a lease uh in at the February board meeting, but. Um, we are, we are not able to um go into detail about that today. And then the other item that we did receive some additional funds in the budget last year. For fiscal twenty-five around technical assistance. Um, in the allowance, uh, we we have not received uh an appropriation to provide technical assistance grants. Um, and if we go to the next slide. We just provided, uh, this is literally from the governor's budget book with the um, the more detailed. Information on um our. Allowance in twenty-six compared to twenty-five, and you can see. Um. It's essentially. Um, when you take out um the technical assistance grants, which are under the grant subsidies and contributions. Um, it, you know, the budget is 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 up about a hundred thousand dollars. Compared to twenty twenty-five when you adjust for technical assistance, and that is um primarily in sort of the um required. Um. Uh, categories around salaries. Um, and um, the restricted. Like, like. For example, um, our information technology costs. Uh, it's a control, it's what's called a controlled subobject, and there's a specific calculation of a specific amount of money. That uh is budgeted for that. Um, and so. Our budget uh does include all of those, all of those things. Um, and um also they did provide um. Some funds for um reclassifications. Of of salaries.
Okay.
And uh we do have our budget hearings scheduled for next week. Um, and we'll share the details of that with you. Um. And um. I think. If there are no questions on the budget, we can move on to our final update.
Date on that yet? What's the date on there?
For the budget hearings?
Hmm, yes.
Um, they are Thursday and Friday. And they should be on your calendar.
All right, thank you.
Yes, February sixth and February seventh, if I have my. Dates right. Um. Okay, and then I'd just like to ask. Archia Sethi Snowden, if she could provide an update on outreach and communications?
Hi, everyone. Um, just a quick update. So. On some of the projects that we've been working on, um, our AIB updates, which is the email that goes out um. About monthly at this rate. Post meetings, um, two have been sent out so far to our email list, which. Is up to almost two thousand people. Um, and so far of the two, we have an average of a fifty-one point six percent open rate, so we're reaching close to a thousand. People with these emails as well as a ten point one percent click rate. We have a lot of links embedded in there, so there's a lot of information. Um, the goal of these emails is really to. Cover what happens in the meetings if people aren't able to tune in as well as celebrating progress and looking forward. So. Sharing about things that are happening in the future um that people may want to tune into or look out for. Um. And some other just data around this, a lot of people are reopening and coming back to the email, and the open rate is above our average open rate for just our typical meetings. Are happening emails. So. It's clear that they're reaching people, um, and we're going to continue to iterate. And address our AIB updates to make sure that they're both informative and engaging. Um, for our website redesign, as mentioned in the last meeting, our contractor started in early December. Um, and has been making a lot of progress in terms of creating a style guide, working on navigation, as well as. Um, we're starting to figure out the process of updating our content. Of the website. Um, we are also working with Do-It to figure out our um system that we'll be using for the website. So that's just something that. Um, is the next decision that we need to make. There will definitely be opportunities for input. Um, on what wants, on what changes you all want to see from the current website. And then hopefully in the next few meetings, we can bring our contractor as well to give a little preview. Um, and then lastly, as has been mentioned, um, we've been working on implementation highlights by pillar as well as by LEA, so telling. The story of blueprint implementation in each LEA um in terms of progress and innovations. So we are still working on those. Um, and we'll provide some updates on that soon as well.
Thank you.
Um, Vice Chair Kirwan?
On the last bullet, the implementation highlights by pillar. What? Wh- how will those get um distributed, communicated? What's the communication strategy for um? For communicating the highlight?
Yeah, that's a great question. So so far, we're thinking obviously to. Blueprint coordinators, superintendents, as well as to legislators, um, so that they understand what's going on in their respective districts as well. We're also hoping to post them publicly on the website and tease them through social media, have little highlights of them as well. So. Multifaceted, directly sending to a lot of people, but also posting publicly so people may stumble upon them if they're on certain websites or some or. Like that.
One one other question, um. Uh, I'm I'm kind of old school in that uh I grew up reading newspapers and. Uh, people don't read them the way uh they used to. But I've always thought uh some targeted, well-placed third po- party op-eds. Are a good way of um communicating. The the and and bringing attention to the su- uh success of the blueprint. Per- you know, particularly if it's done by a third party, uh, you know, somebody who's not. Uh, part of the board or in an LEA or whatever. Have you given any thought to um? Uh, that strategy? Is it is it still useful? And um if it is, you know, maybe some of us could suggest possibly some names of individuals. That we could get to uh uh do an op-ed.
Yeah, transparently, not a ton of thought into it just because of capacity right in this moment, but definitely something we can think about um and can follow up with you on.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, I wonder, just building on uh Dr. Kirwan's comment, um. Yeah, I think um that. As you say, people don't read the newspapers much, but the local newspapers, I think, um, are actually, you know. People do read those. And so to your point, I wonder if we might target. Some of the smaller uh newspapers that are maybe more likely to be read by folks in their communities. For either a targeted op-ed or or, you know, or reach out to. Uh, reporters in those um. In those uh at those media outlets to share the. Implementation highlights for their for their counties and uh perhaps they'd want to write an article about.
Yeah, definitely. Um, Member Dos?
Yes, I'm excited about the uh website redesign and just wanted to know what is the estimated date for completion?
Yes, we are hoping in the spring. Um, we spring spans a few months. Um, but we are hoping in the spring, we are still working through a few. Just technical aspects that we need to determine before the actual development can start happening. So we're hoping to have clarity on that in the next few weeks, and then once that is figured out, I'll have a more specific date and timeline. Uh. Um, these are just some things that we have to work through and do it in terms of the CMS we're using and things of that sort. So I'm hoping to have a specific. T- range of dates, um, but we're still hoping for the spring.
Okay.
And I just want to, you know, add in there that um. We have been, you know, working with Do-It to try to. Um, get some very. Clear answers about how we can move forward with our website redesign. Um, and um. For months, and so um that is. Um, that has been a very. We've had other challenges that have caused the delay, but right now, you know, our our inability to really move forward is. That we really need some very clear um guidance from Do-It, and we're working to to get that as soon as possible.
Well, I'm just astounded that it that process is taking so long. Uh, it is just um. Baffling to me. And I. I I still need an explanation as to how we get there for this length of time. Yeah.
I think that you are not alone in your feelings.
Yeah, okay. All right. Is anything else that we need to cover at this point?
That's everything we have on the agenda.
Okay. For the good of all, are there anything that any of the? Board members want to raise or address at this point in time before we adjourn? If not, let me again thank all of our board members for your time and attention today. Uh, thank for the, thanks to the public for joining us and also for the hard work of our staff. And then we'll continue to move forward in this endeavor. Um, and report back to you on some of the issues and questions that we still have outstanding. At this point in time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, second to the motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We adjourn.
Thank you.